I think it is now finally 7:00 PM. So, since we have all the commissioners here, I would like to call this meeting to order. First item of business is to accept the agenda.
Sorry, I was going to move that we accept the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? And that carries unanimously. Since we're all here, there can be no remote attendance.
I could act as a remote if you like.
So, we're moving on into public comment. And item A, under public comment, we have a 2019 Audubon Breeding Birds report with Longstand Park District friend Beth Cato.
Sure. Please do.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, they're kind of neat. I like them. Okay. There you go. So, maybe just read this letter that we've written to you. "This dear Tim and Commissioners, Champagne County Audubon, would once again like to commend the Urbana Park District for its strong commitment to careful management of natural areas in its system. A wide range of habitat variety is included in Park District property, woodlands at Bucy, Prairie Corridor at Meadow Brook, Perkins. The marsh at Weaver Park is becoming an exciting place as one of the best of the few wetlands in the county. These oasises for wildlife within our vast expanse of agricultural fields become increasingly important as our towns expand around them. These areas are particularly vital rest stops for spring and fall. Keep up the good work. It will be interesting to see the results of the renovation of Crystal Lake." This report covers the year 2019. About eight observers were involved, plus information from our Audubon Bird Notes list served. Beth Cato effort compilation. Other contributors included Charlie Anker and Carol Peterson. During breeding season, a total of roughly 20 hours was spent in the field. In addition, Roger Diggs spent many hours at Meadow Brook. Estimate of 30 hours was spent for computed data lately. Bucy Woods and Crystal Lake Park had 47 breeding species, including the barred owl and the great horned owls. Okay. Oh, a parrilla warbler was there, and also a yellow-billed cuckoo. And a pair of red-winged blackbirds has taken up unusual territory by the Nature Center, actually, out by the road, taking advantage of the bird feeder. Eastern bluebirds have nested. Because Crystal, Bucy Woods is a major stop for migrating birds, I also included a list of spring arrival dates. Meadow Brook Park has 56 breeding bird species. Highlights were a sharp-shinned hawk, woodcock, and nesting screech owl. Rudy-throated hummingbird and a blue-gated gnatcatcher nested, as did eastern bluebirds and tree swallows. And a pair of rose-breasted grosbeaks was seen, so that's the largest number of breeding birds of the parks. Perkins site was undergoing reconstruction, so access was limited, but some young wood ducks were seen. And a raisin-collared dove was seen in the vicinity. Eastern bluebird and yellow warbler were part of 40 species reported. Weaver Park, with its marsh, has breeding evidence of 33 species. There's a turkey vulture and a roost in the neighborhood, and many can be seen flying overhead. But the highlight was a family of American coots, which were seen nowhere else in the county. So, that's what I had to report, and I've got, also, that might be interesting to know, during the whole year, in the whole country, whole county, we saw 216 species of birds. And Bucy had 137, which is the highest in the county, but that makes sense because there are a lot of people out there every Sunday looking. Meadow Brook had 95, so they do pretty well. Perkins 46, and Weaver 32. And a lot of this, too, depends on how much time people are able to spend. So, if anybody has any questions.
Beth, Bucy Woods is lumped with Crystal Lake, is that correct?
Beg your pardon?
Bucy Woods and Crystal Lake are lumped together in that order?
Yeah. That's kind of a problem, because we have records for Bucy Woods going way back, and we never used to do Crystal Lake Park.
Right.
And now, we're doing more of Crystal Lake Park. So, do we keep them separate or put them together? I sometimes try and keep them a little bit separate, but we do combine them for general purposes.
Is this up or down, the number of breeding species and breeding pairs? Is it up or down, or is it about the same?
I think it's about the same. Yeah, I would have to look that up, but I think it's about the same. And so, it much depends on how many people are out there looking, you know?
Yeah. I'm astounded there are 33 out at Weaver. That's really a lot.
Be neat to see it graphed, maybe someday, if we had an intern take the data over the years and kind of put it into graphic format, just so you can see it at a glance.
Once Katie gets that software, we can zap anything, right?
And speaking of software, I will send you an electronic copy as soon as I get. I was trying to put it together this afternoon, but I was having problems, so it didn't do what it was supposed to do. Things won't go where I wanted them to go, but I'll work on that for you.
Beth, would you say the Sunday bird walks are keeping even on the increase?
I think we've been very popular the last few years, and it'll start again the first Sunday in March, if anybody wants to come, 7:30 at the Nature Center, and then go through the end of May.
I think last year, we had as many as, like, into the 40s.
Yeah.
Really? On a nice day.
Yeah. Actually, a few too many.
I was going to say, that sounds like you need to divide up. It's a little difficult. And we kept splitting up into groups. People kind of gravitated towards somebody they thought knew what they were doing. Someone made the mistake of following me.
And I sort of tried to stay at the back with new people or any kids that are around, so.
It's great information. We really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just another way of looking at how well we're managing.
Right.
The areas that we've got. And how important it is that they be managed. Yeah.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Yeah, thanks for all your work.
We look forward to next year's report.
I'll stay around and see what you're up to. You want this mic or?
Okay, moving on. Is there anyone else here from the public wishing to comment or address the board? Seeing none, and I, as I understand it, there are no staff introductions. Move on to the UPDAC report, which was in writing tonight. Any comments or questions on that?
It was a good me, I mean, I'll say it was a good meeting. You know, it would have been nice if Katie had been not covered with the Chicago crud, but, I mean, it was a good, quick response from the staff to report, and I think that's one of the highlights for UPDAC members, is knowing what's going on, sort of almost before it's happening. And so, they were, I know they were all really, really interested, glad, lots of, lots of good comments. I don't know if we mentioned it before, one of the, one of the UPDAC members works for DSC, and she had gone to Blair Park to, well, with someone, at least one person in a wheelchair, and really gave us some good insight on things that were difficult now, and things that we should be thinking about, that we might not have thought about when we're getting ready to do all the renovation. And so, I mean, that's just one small thing that UPDAC does for us, is that they're, they're a whole new, the whole new set of eyes on what's going on, and the buy-in in this particular group is really, is really strong.
Great attendance.
Yeah, it is. I think almost all of them were there.
Everybody was.
Yeah, yeah, it's not like the old days when staff greatly outnumbered UPDAC members. Yeah, the fact that we've gone to essentially self-selection, as opposed to appointing from on high, has made a huge difference. And I think the more it goes on, the more I'll expect, don't you think so? The more that we'll expect to see it be a really strong group.
An interesting experience yesterday, we're trying to pull together a group of UPDAC alumni.
Oh, yeah.
To form a group, and it was just interesting to get their perspective on all these various years that they had been involved. The 50th anniversary of the formation of UPDAC is coming up next year.
Right.
So, we're hoping to do something to celebrate that.
Yeah. And there are at least, I think, two people on the foundation board whose parents were on UPDAC. Isn't that right? All right? Yeah, yeah. Yep.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Yep. So. Yeah. Those circles rippling out from the center.
Generations.
That's right. So, are you doing money next time, Katie?
Say it again.
Are you doing money at the next meeting?
No, I don't think so, because the topics are already set. So, they'll work me in.
Okay, good.
I'm off that week anyway, so that wasn't going to work for me to do February, but I think, like, they'll just get me in the next round of whenever you guys decide.
Good, good.
And I'm ready, I already have the presentation ready to go, so.
You don't want to waste that work.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just, I couldn't even.
I know. That was, that, those germs were really potent, yeah.
So, I needed to mess up, but it was for the best.
Oh, yeah. I like to share information, not germs.
That's right.
Anything else on UPDAC? Okay, then we're ready to move on to the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda this evening are approval of the minutes from the January 7 study session, and the January 14 regular board meeting, our three departmental reports, administration, planning and operations, and recreation, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. Under our rules, it's the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate action. Is there any commissioner wishing to do that? Okay, so, what we have is the consent agenda as before us. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and the items on it in an omnibus fashion?
Yes, I'll move, so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and under our consent agenda rules, there is to be no further discussion at this point. We should hold a roll call vote, starting at the left, with a little round of?
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. And then, we'll just on to reports. Financial reports.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'll be talking about the performance of the Park District through January 31, 2020. The first report that I'll talk about is the revenue and expenditure report. This is the first, this is a budget report that shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the nine months ending January 31. The first page of this report, we call sum one, and it's all of the funds of the Park District except for the capital improvements fund, which just kind of bungles everything up, so we like to look just at our operating. Revenues for this period were $10,978,000, which is an increase of $123,000 since December. 6.7 million of that was property taxes, and we still have a few lingering property tax payments that haven't come, which is later than ever before. So, I plan on following up with the treasurer's office this month, but with everything happening there, it's just like little piddly disbursements. We've gotten all of the major regular disbursements, but like, there's like the mobile home back taxes, and the University of Illinois payment, and it's probably a total of like $20,000 to $30,000 that we haven't gotten yet. So, hopefully, it'll, it'll all come through, and they, they're having some change over there, so.
It's putting it below.
But otherwise, that's fairly normal. I think part of the reason that the property taxes are a lot lower percentage-wise, we've only received 93%, 94%, is because OSF was issued a tax bill, and then later, the Department of Revenue, the Board of Review, the local Board of Review recommended they be added to the tax rolls and added them. Then, the state approved their exemption. The Board of Review is appealing that, or going through whatever process there is to contest that ruling of the exemption. So, in the meantime, they were issued a tax bill. We knew that going into the year, that that was a possibility, so they potentially were issued, they were added on as new property, and they were issued a tax bill, but they have not physically written the check yet, which is different than what happened with Carl, because Carl actually paid their property tax bills under protest. They actually wrote the money, and then, because they were protesting it, we had to reserve it. So, at this point, they've never paid, so that's why our property tax amount's a little low. But it's not anything that we can't weather, I think that it's okay. They're a pretty small portion of the tax bill compared to the Carl property, so. Okay, so, moving on with that, so expenditures were $10,576,000, which is a change of $816,000 since December. We have a surplus after nine months, which means there's an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $401,000. Page two is just the capital improvements fund. I need to do some work on the budget on this. I'm going to call our auditors and see how they want me to do it with selling the second bonds, but you can see the budget doesn't match at all what our year-to-date is, and so, I don't know whether they want me, whether they're going to want us to do the amendment just in April, or whether selling the bonds and updating the capital budgets, the board that officially did that already in December. So, I don't know if that was sufficient, or if we have to do the, the legal ordinance that we do in April to update it before I actually make the change to the budget, so I'm going to ask them how they want that done. But anyway, our actual revenues for nine months were $7,551,000. That includes revenues, earned revenues, as well as other sources of funds, including bond, bond sales. Expenditures were $877,000, and revenues exceed expenditures, leaving an increase in fund balance in the capital improvements fund after nine months of $6,674,000. And page three is both of the first two pages added together, and we have an ending fund balance of the entire district of $14,338,000 at this point in the year. Following that are the three, sorry, the summary pages for the working funds, the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool. And happy to answer any questions you might have about the revenue and expenditure reports. So, I'll move on to the treasurer's report now. Nancy, earlier in the meeting, was talking about the software that we don't own, but I went to a really interesting conference session about using your data, like, that comes either from your registration system, or from your financial system, or even from customer surveys, and you put it all into like a data management system that then can create graphics and visuals out of that information, and it was, it was really great, and some other park districts are doing it to really tell their stories more visually. Would love to see us move in that direction, so I'm going to keep going to conference sessions like that, as I learn more. So, it was really great. So, hopefully, I can begin incorporating more and more of that into my reports as well, although the graphics that they were using weren't just financial graphs. I mean, they were doing all sorts of stuff. They were saying how many, how long it was taking to complete work orders, and the cost per customer that enters your facility based on how many hours you're open, and, I mean, it was, it was really interesting, so.
Are the graphics big and colorful?
They were very colorful and easy to understand, yeah. So, I liked it a lot, so. All right, so next, I'll talk about the treasurer's report. This is a report that shows the amount of cash that the district has on one day, January 31, 2020. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested, for a grand total for January Page two, the first section at the top lists amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So, of that, $16,299,000 total dollars on hand, $15,148,000 is out in investments. We have three 24-month CDs invested with Commerce Bank that matured in January, so I worked with our broker with Commerce to reinvest those, and however, rates have gone down over the last six months. I don't know if you've noticed that in your personal finances, but we suffer from that same problem, and so, we were seeing rates, the average rate of our CDs went down by about 0.5% in that particular investment, the Commerce Bank CDs, which is kind of the last one that's listed there in the white section before it turns gray. And so, those three CDs were invested at something like 2.45% or 2.5%, and the most I could get was 1.75%, so it brought my average way down. So, but I decided, instead of doing 24-month CDs, to try to do a little bit shorter, so I think I did 12 months on those, just to wait and see what interest does, and I just tried to keep our money invested in the best rates I could, and I wasn't seeing really a better rate to go out further, so I just, I just kind of picked the best ones that I can for the time being, and, and just hope that they go up. So, we were doing pretty good there for a little while. And so, there was no changes to inter-fund loans, that was the only changes really in the investment section, was reinvesting those CDs, and so, yeah.
In our, in the hospital set aside, do we get to keep the interest, or do we have to hand that over to them?
So, the way that these two line items have been working, the one that's the presence hospital chase savings account, that $20,000, that one is incurring interest, but it's at 0.28%, it's like really, really small. And then, the other one, we haven't been adding any interest to at all, because the letter that we got from the treasurer's office didn't, didn't tell us to, so we have no reason to do that. You know, like, if we were told, oh, and make sure you're investing it and saving the interest.
Right, right.
But all that'll have to come out in whatever the judge's ruling winds up being about this case. So, they, this case was on hold until the Carl case was finished.
Right.
And we don't even know if it's finished.
Do they have to hand the interest back in that Carl case?
They did not, no.
Oh, they didn't?
No, they did not. They had to pay back the taxes that were paid, the actual taxes, and they had to pay court costs, but they didn't have to pay attorney's fees or interest. That was what that judge ruled in that particular case.
Right, right.
But I, you know, that doesn't mean that it's going to be any precedent for how this one comes out, because the situation is different, but.
But there's a 1.93% to the side of that, is that not?
That one, it's the, it's the average that I'm getting on all of the chase, the Commerce Bank CDs, so it's not going into that particular line item, but I am getting 1.93% on all of the CDs. It's just those two line items added together, so.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
So, we have it invested with interest, it's just, the interest isn't going into that line item separately. So, does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, so, sorry, moving on to page three, unless there's other questions, happy to answer anything you have. We had total disbursements of $1.1 million this month, which is quite a bit larger than average for a January. Part of the reason for that, we had three payrolls, and then, we also had quite a large payment out of capital improvements fund for the Saline project. The major construction bill came for that project that, and remember, that was fully funded by the state ahead of time, so that was pre-funded. We were the paying agent on that, so we were just paying the bill. And then, also, we all had quite a bit of activity in the Perkins Road site improvements as well, so that just kind of all added up to be above average for the month of January. But nothing out of the ordinary, other than that.
I move we accept the treasurer's report for audit.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously.
Okay, I'll run through the changes in the capital projects budget for the month of January as well. There's quite a lot of pages to this now. I hope some of those will go away once the, the first big phase of the Crystal Lake Park plan is complete. So, in the 2019, series 2019A ARS bonds, the only activity was we paid the cost of issuance, and then, we also paid the park application fee. So, that, that was simple. In the 2020 capital budget, for the bonds that we just sold for our rollovers in December, the only activity has been to pay the cost of issuance. In the 2019 capital budget, a transfer was recognized up in the revenue section for the portion of the interpretive exhibit for the Nature Center that was paid during the month, and expenses were paid towards tributes, a payment for the construction, several payments, actually, for the construction of the Saline Rock Griffl Habitat Improvement Project, and the final payment for fabrication of the Nature Center's, oh, I don't know if it was the final payment, sorry. A payment was made for the Nature Center's interpretive exhibit, and then, we also made a payment to Farnsworth for the health and wellness facility design. On the 2018 capital budget, there was just a little bit of spending. Both of the line items that were, that have asterisks were both for the same expenditure, and it was for the Meadow Brook Gateway. The line item in the middle of the page was the portion that came from the donation from the WITS, and the actual cost of the construction was more than the gifts, so the remainder was put down in contingency out of this budget. And in the 2017 capital budget, expenditures occurred on construction crew projects. ITEP construction, and a translator device was purchased out of rec equipment, which I thought was kind of interesting, and a payment was made to ERA for the continued design of CLP Lake Rehab Project. And now, Andy and Derek have some updates for you on capital projects.
Yep, I'll start with the Crystal Lake Rehab Project. Our bid is currently out, we have over 30 plan holders at this point. We were made aware a day or two ago that there's actually an additional iDOT bid letting that's scheduled with some very large projects to take place shortly after our anticipated CLP bid opening. So, we talked a little bit with ERA, our engineers, and it was determined that would be favorable to our project if we pushed our bid opening back behind that iDOT bid schedule in March. So, doing that would allow potential bidders to have better clarity on their work schedule and capacity for 2020, and would probably get us more interested bidders, more competition, and probably better pricing. So, with that being said, we were hoping to have a recommendation at the March board meeting, now it's looking like it'll be at the April board meeting to allow us to move that back by a week or two.
And the, and nobody cares that we do that? I mean, can you?
No, we'll, we'll issue an addendum, and it'll go out to all the plan holders, and then, they'll just adjust their schedules accordingly.
But there's no, there's no legal, oh, that's good.
We've pushed back bid dates before. In this case, I think most of the bidders will be very welcoming that you do it, right?
I would think so, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it seems really smart, it just seems so unusual that there aren't special hoops and things that you have to jump through, so that's good.
Make sure everybody who has the plan holders knows about it, that that's the one, yeah.
Well, something works easily, then, that's good.
Our Lille Parking Project, at our last meeting, I had updated the board that Archaeological Group had completed probably about two-thirds of their work, and had not found anything of significance other than an early 20th century garbage pit. On the second day, they found some additional stones and signs of burial vaults that would be along the eastern side of our proposed parking lot. So, the, the public archaeological group from the university is finalizing an exhibit right now that would graph the coordinates, the GPS graph points from where they're seeing signs of these vaults on top of our plan sheet to show, to give a good picture of exactly how these things would lay and potentially impact our project. And once they have this exhibit completed, and their report's already done, they'll send it to the state, and then, we'll call the state and be able to review that exhibit, so that we're both looking at the same thing on our situation, and be able to determine our next steps from that point forward. It sounds like we'll have some options that will, you know, be able to either revise the plan or address the burials that are potentially on that eastern side. It's looking like if there's an impact, it's probably very minimal to the parking lot itself, but may have some impact to the connecting path from the parking lot towards the sidewalk to the cottage. Hopefully, we'll know some more in the next week, and I'll keep you updated.
Just a quick comment. When you say the next week, are you, are you anticipating that they will be able to make some recommendations at that point, or?
I'm anticipating that that exhibit from the university group would get done probably by the end of this week, and then, we can schedule a phone call with the state, probably early next week, hopefully, and be able to walk through the process and what can be done, and what our options are, and then, we'll review as a staff group and make our plan moving forward.
So, perhaps it won't delay us overmuch?
Will depend on what the map shows in the overlay.
Yeah, that's scary.
Of north-south grave shafts that are right at that. North-south grave shafts are right at that eastern extent of our proposed lot.
Okay.
And so seeing, you know, what that conflict is will, will help to inform. The path is also going to be an issue, we're hopeful that we can talk with, we'll, we'll find out when we talk with the state about what they'll allow. But if we get in a situation where we desire to move forward with full construction and there are conflicts, the resolve may be to excavate the remains and look for the archaeologists to appropriately, you know, conserve them. That would certainly slow the project down, so we'll need to get more information to find out.
Can you be right next to them?
Good question, but we'll find out.
Yeah, I mean, is there a setback for graves?
When we talked with the folks at the state, they said that we're kind of in a, you know, new territory here. Usually it's very large projects that are
Oh, sure.
where they have these sorts of situations. Our question is moving forward, what are our restrictions? We plant a tree, do we need to have an archaeologist?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Forehand. We hope not, but maybe there's some guidelines, you know, if you encounter something that looks like a shaft or a stone, then stop. We'll find out more, we'll sort of share it with you all.
And this was a surprise because we thought there was nothing there, is that?
Well, we knew it was a graveyard, we just didn't, I mean, the park is.
Thomas Leo supposedly had
Right.
removed everything, yeah.
When we did the cottage basement, we did encounter a single, you know,
Yeah.
grave and those were excavated and removed. My understanding is that they're, they're on campus with the archaeologist office.
Katie and I were over at Buie C Bank, down in the vault, looking at old documents and did you want to mention the document you saw?
I found, there was a couple of letters and title insurance policy. The letter said something along the lines of, that the title insurance pol, we should get, that the park district should get a title. I think it was signed by Darius Phibus. Anyway, that the park district should get a title insurance policy that would cover the cost to excavate and remove remains. So I need to look into that more, I haven't looked into it yet, but we just found that on Friday. So I, I was gonna either go back over there or see if we have a copy of it already scanned in, in our documents. So we were looking for something else, I just said, oh, I gotta come back and read this again, so.
Also, I want to thank Andy and Derek for the careful work, obviously it was unexpected. And in, in these documents, you know, it's clear that there was some operation there before it became a park, but clearly it had been named and situated as a park. So I'm sure there aren't many case studies where you have a public park and also, you know, it's not Lille Cemetery that we're trying to do this, it's a public park. So we're trying to be sensitive and make sure that anybody that's observing in the community would know we're taking the high road and trying to do things right. And it's, you know, difficult it is to drag a project out, obviously it's somebody's, you know, connection. So trying to do the right thing is what we're trying to do. We'd love to wrap it up and we are concerned, as Derek mentioned, you know, what do we do in the future? We don't have a lot of plans there, but there's always something, whether it's trees or a sidewalk or something that needs, you know, to be attended to. So I guess we're learning as we go and, you know, it's a unique situation to the UPD. I don't know of any other park districts that have encountered this. But anyway, lots of things start here and we're the first. But I do appreciate their time and, you know, they have other projects, it's slow work and it's waiting and confirming and getting to the next square. And that's what the plan is.
How much beyond the, the footprint of the parking lot and path have they investigated at this point?
Just the footprint essentially, right?
Yeah, the contractor had already done most of their excavation work for the lot itself. So when the archaeologist, archaeologist came in and we had Keith there on site, they worked within that same footprint.
Makes you think about cremation a little better, doesn't it?
Right. And then obviously the next thing we're watching is when University Avenue work starts and if there'll be any, any further
There'll be bones flying.
discussions, so we'll have to wait and sit tight on that. Maybe there's provisions in place already for that, but we're not aware of them, if they are.
Not, not to belabor it, but would it be to our advantage just for future development to kind of know what else is there? Is that just too expensive to?
Well, we looked into doing like a ground penetrating radar
Yeah, that would have been great.
and then what we're told is that the soils in that area would not lead to anything conclusive from that. So the best way to do it is actually peeling back the earth a few feet and looking for those signs.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Of course, of course. It's this great new tool, sorry, it won't work here.
Yep, okay.
So that tool wouldn't necessarily be available. You know, we've talked more recently over the last year or so, as, you know, that downtown through Lille Park, Crystal Lake connection gets stronger, maybe we need to think of Lille Park as more of an urban park. Suggestions we've heard is, you know, more picnicking and maybe a small play opera. I think we should hold where we are right now to see where things go and see how much flexibility we have, you know, for the future before we really consider other needs or opportunities. But again, there aren't a whole lot of things planned, but we're handling it carefully.
Okay. I was gonna mention one more thing, it's related to our aquatics, two pools and the outdoor pool R and R fund. We began working with Hinneman Engineering, who was the engineering firm that worked with us for the pool pack. And we're starting to engage with them on a proposal for the indoor and outdoor pool CO2 feeder system conversion and to replace the indoor pool's domestic hot water system. So the CO2 conversion is driven by a few different factors. One is it's much safer than acid for handling and storage purposes. We've had a distributor, our, our supplier is no longer servicing the area and it's becoming increasingly more difficult to find a provider and then the service that we receive from our new ones is not up to standards and not as safe. The CO2 system takes up a lot less space than the acid tanks. So we're now kind of really increasing our storage capacity at both facilities, which is desperately needed. And then lastly, a lot of the public pools in our area are starting to transition from the myriatic acid to the CO2 system. U of I and the YMCA currently operate with those systems. So we're hoping to do that here in the next couple of months.
And how expensive is that?
Actually projecting cost savings.
Oh, wow.
Additionally, the, with the acid tank, particularly the indoor aquatic center, its placement and where they load from, it seems like it was prone to frequent spillovers, either, you know, and probably intended fillers, people that were contracted to bring the material to us. And we've had more than one electrical issue as a result, so we'll save money on that end as well.
Yeah, I seem to remember being in the pool with some not good air due to that.
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, it's, we, we've been looking at this for a while, we've toured some other facilities that have it. We worked at a pool way back when that had it, so it's nothing terribly new.
Oh, really?
And our biggest concern was really at the indoor aquatic center in terms of air quality. You know, if you get it with a leak in the CO2 line, you'll, what staff CD concerns do you have? And that's why we really wanted to bring on Hinneman to look at it closely for us to make sure we're, we're protecting staff.
And so if you can imagine, there's a small tube that feeds the acid into the controller, then leads it into the lines. Well, you never know when those tubes go bad. And they're, you know, they can be anywhere from 15, 20 feet long. And people have walked in where acid is squirting.
Oh, yeah.
So, especially down in the indoor pool.
Yeah, not good.
Kind of in a basement type setting, it's not a very safe place.
Yeah.
We had, that happened at the old Crystal Lake Pool, remember being called out on a weekend and hoses flopping with acid flying all over the room? I mean, seriously, it's very concerning.
CO2, in my opinion, makes the water a lot clearer as well.
Uh-huh.
Thanks very much. Moving on to the executive director's report.
Sure, a few things. First thing I'm passing around is a letter from the Atkins Group. As you know, about a week ago, Derek and I met with Mayor and Carol Mitten, Mary Ellen Wallner and Mike Dob from the Forest Preserve District. We had Rebecca McBride from her nonprofit CU City Farms. We had also invited certainly Spencer Atkins and one of his staff, Perry Green, who's their grounds and golf expert or golf site superintendent. We also invited the three members of the firm that we're aware of that does conservation communities, Jim Patchett, Ron Dutch and David Yaka. So we had a chance, they came in the night before, visited Stone Creek, we met for breakfast, then followed up with the meeting. We had a very, very good discussion, the Design Solutions for the Land is the company. They shared some of their redevelopment schemes of other places that they've done. I think the purpose and the point was to really suggest that we could be helpful perhaps locally in a, in a public discussion of what is the future, what could happen, you know, what's, what's the opportunities for Urbana? So we really are encouraging the Atkins Group to go through a public process. As we know, they've hired Steve Offelbaum from Applied Ecological Services to kind of go through that land transition. But I think what we're suggesting is there needs to be a little more of the public, you know, involvement. What's the, what's the land use plan for the rest of the site? How do you attract new development? What's the long-term plan to keep tax generating homes and businesses in that neighborhood? So we're really urging them, I have a meeting next Monday with Spencer again, I'm gonna really urge him to consider, you know, picking up with this group. They probably need to enlarge their scope, this is our opinion, you know, to include those other things. So right now it appears, again, we're from the outside looking in, so we don't have a lot of information at this point, but seems like they're just now starting the touches in the neighborhood. But there hasn't been any information coming in or out for Urbana. So the mayor of the park district, the forest preserve was really strongly suggesting a, you know, very open public process so that people knew. I mentioned, I think at our last previous UPDAK meeting, questions we got are, hey, are our property taxes going to go up? You know, is this, you know, gonna really impact Urbana? So those questions are coming from outside of the neighborhood. And so I also met with a few residents inside the neighborhood and they're very concerned and would encourage probably groups like the park district and the city and the forest preserve to at least be involved to help, you know, bring that, I don't know what to call it, public process that we're very comfortable and used to doing. So that's what we're urging, obviously they'll, they'll need to do that and be willing to do that. And so we did get a letter, I'd ask, you know, maybe it'd be a good show of faith if you sent letters to the city, the forest preserve and the park district just to let our boards know what we're doing, why we're doing it, that we're invited, we're not trying to insert ourself, but that we have, you know, we're stakeholders basically. We're not sure what the outcome will be or what path they'll choose or, you know, what, what we can guarantee, but get us on a path where we can figure things out, share information, bring opportunities that really could help, you know, change things in Stone Creek. So my sense is, you know, Spencer and their staff really do want to see good quality things happen. We're not sure, like, we're on the public side, so we know that process, we do it all the time. I think if you're a private organization, you focus a lot more on your private needs and keeping things close at hand. We're suggesting this is a time where they really step out of that role or invite other groups in that can help open that, that public discussion. So that's kind of where we are now. I think all of our groups are willing to work, show to, show up at meetings, help carry some load if we're moving in that right direction. And so that, that would be our understanding tonight, that we've been invited to be, you know, a stakeholder and participate in that. Obviously they'll have to lead it, we think we can help lead that, you know, meaning the city, us and the forest preserve with different options, but they, again, would have to be agreeable to that, so we'll see how that goes. Every indication is they're interested in doing that, just, you know, the follow-through has to happen fairly soon. So we'll be able to report back more as, as we continue to meet. Certainly if there's questions or concerns or requests of the board, let us know, either, you know, later at the end of the meeting or certainly if you think of it later. But we're, again, we're talking about everything, how do we create a new community? What's, what opportunities are there, what are some of the challenges? So there's plenty of both. And so we think it's worth our time and our interest to make sure that things, you know, go the right direction. So we'll continue to monitor that. As Roger mentioned, we did have a great UPDAK, small group, kind of moving toward this reunion. You know, we started out with the idea of creating a giving circle, I think people are interested in that. But we really, it was recommended that we maybe focus on the 50th anniversary. Some things that we talked about at the meeting were perhaps developing a newsletter, maybe it comes out every other month with information for former UPDAK. You know, comments made that I thought were really powerful were, you know, people that spent three years of their lives learning all about everything we do and then they're suddenly done, and then what do you do with that? You know, we joked about people that could probably explain tax caps, what do you do with that? Information, it seems useless at that point. So I think there's an interest at least to keep people informed. And we thought a newsletter, e-newsletter would be at least a good thing to do. I think there was willingness, at least from the, you know, six or so people at the meeting, you know, if we needed help, special projects, maybe there's ways to volunteer, do letter campaigns or if there's situations. So the other thing we noted too is as new UPDAK roll off, we'll have a way to capture them. Instead of waiting 20, 50 years, you know, to go back and find all these people. So I think we're really excited, there was a lot of energy in the room. We'll see how that goes. But, you know, we have all these ambassadors out there that, you know, there's handfuls that would probably still be willing to serve, do something. Also talked about opportunities, future board members, future foundation trustees, you know, with that knowledge, that makes you, you know, more desirable for, you know, for future roles. So that's kind of where we're headed with that. And then again, hopefully we loop back, there might be special projects or things of interest that draw that group out, whether maybe the financial help and not necessarily in just them writing checks, but maybe they help us fundraise or, you know, get projects up off the ground, things like that. So we're excited. We had a great foundation meeting on Monday. We had Farnsworth Group here and did a presentation on the proposed health and wellness facility, talked all about the grant, did a real deep dive on what all the spaces are. We formally asked for the foundation's help in fundraising. So we want to continue to work with them, you know, a lot of information for them to absorb in a few minutes. But it felt like there was a lot of enthusiasm in the room and thought we're moving in the right direction on the facility. So we're gonna loop back and see what options, opportunities we have there. I think one of the items we're working on that's newer is a traffic analysis. As you know, the Washington corridor there is a pretty busy place. We have Brookins, our proposed facility, Prairie Campus, and there's, you know, morning and afternoon traffic and neighborhood traffic. So we thought the analysis would give us a little more information of what's going on, how to respond to that. Let's see. March 3rd, we have a meeting with Senator Duckworth's staff at the cottage. We'll have city staff, forest preserve and park district staff. Our hope is that we could begin talking about acquisition of the corridor. I think in our quick and long-term assessment, really it's about gaining control or having a place on the trail. Could it be a shared use, you know, is it an ownership? Really just kind of see what, what direction we can get Norfolk Southern, who will be at the meeting also to see what they're doing. To help that, working with the city and having some discussions with some of the customers. There's only two, Amosakote, we have a meeting set up to go visit with them, see what their business plans. It'd be great to see if we could, you know, get somebody that would say a positive about that. We also are working with DART, trying to set up a meeting, trying to get an in with them.
Those are the truck people?
That's the cup, sole cup, DART.
Yep.
Still use the rail spur, right?
They're the one main customers, we understand there are probably some changes for Amosakote, but DART is, you know, still gonna remain a customer, but we wanna, we'd love to have a dialogue. At least if we could establish the fact that they wouldn't be challenged or threatened with additional use or an alternative use, that'd be a good place. So we'll continue to work on that. We have the State Planning Research Grant, we'll still be working on that, finishing that grant program up and getting more information. You know, it's a critical corridor for us, it'll answer a lot of transportation needs that we have in Urbana and beyond. So we really need this, so we'll have a chance at least to start a in-depth, intense dialogue with Norfolk Southern about that. Let's see, staff visited with, I think Janet and her staff visited with the Hudena Neighborhood. I wasn't able to attend that evening, but they went out and visited and talked about establishing an opportunity this summer, probably at their day in the park at Victory Park to paint peace poles and
Oh, nice.
be involved with that. We have a number of ongoing discussions, you know, we want to talk about overtime, Grossbach Avenue, what to do with the open space, restoring the turf, those sort of things in the, in the park. But always time to do some fun things and appreciate rec staff getting involved, helping with that. Let's see, we also have Urbana Rotary that will be doing peace poles at Crestview Park on July 15th at the neighborhood night there. I think the club sponsoring the neighborhood night, we're trying to get Rotarians out and work with the neighborhood kids and paint peace poles that evening. So more fun with that. Again, our goal is to get them done and get them out on the street so people can see it and enjoy it, hopefully ask questions. We have a neighborhood meeting next week at King School as a follow-up to some of the vandalism that was done to the art project there. the vandalism that was done to the art project there. We're trying to get, sorry, this week, I said next week. It's Thursday night this week. And a dialogue with residents and Urbana Police, just seeing what we can do, how can we really make things better there? And then today, we had a really good discussion group as a follow-up to our focus groups on aquatics. We've been working in the gardening program and aquatics as a way to really start developing action plans for follow-ups of the focus groups. We'll be coming back to you with information about that. And so we're both excited and challenged. You know, it's, there's a lot of things to keep up with, and, you know, it's a busy, busy facilities. I think the gardening aspect is, probably feels a little bit easier because there's less people involved in that program. It's pretty set to gardening, where aquatics is indoor and outdoor, and, you know, competition and recreational and fitness, you know, and all the different needs trying to come together in two facilities. So I think we had some good opening discussions about, you know, how we could approach that, what we can do. So we'll be coming back to you with more information. I can answer any other questions if you have any, though.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Sure.
And moving on to the president's report, upcoming meetings, March 3rd for the study session, and we should have the wage and benefits study available at that point. That's something that we're revising for, what, the first time in four years, is it? Or if it's in five?
It's been five years.
Yeah, so that can be important information. On March 10, the regular board meeting, there'll be some bid approvals, perhaps, although if the bids are being set back, less clear on that. And also to receive wage, salary, and merit recommendations from administrative team. So we're getting well into the budgeting process in that regard. And also on March 10 is the IAPD 2020 Legislative Breakfast out at Lake of the Woods. And I had forgotten, and March 12 is for the Urbana Parks Foundation Annual Dinner. So there's a whole lot of stuff going on that week.
And we were assured yesterday that the Stone Creek Events Center is open, so they will be hosting us. It's been checked and double-checked.
And we are to be their last, I gather, the last restaurant.
Are we the very last?
I thought that's what I heard, yeah.
It's pretty, I know, yeah.
We have to dust after ourselves.
And moving on to liaison reports, the Finance Study Group last met in December, and we're scheduled to meet again on the 6th of March, so there's nothing new to report there. The Policy Study Group?
We last met in May, and we're scheduled to, again, to meet on March 3rd for further policy review.
It's gonna be a busy day.
Parks Foundation, right?
Foundation met yesterday. Tim kind of covered the, the major thing that we, that we went through. I think there was a question for the, for the foundation of when their current project is going to end, and fundraising project is going to end, and when, when to start up a new one that'll be relative, related to the Health and Wellness Center. They've had some turnover with a couple of people who were there from the beginning, and so they now have a new treasurer, and, and they've, they've got some new foundation members, so. Oh, and also, don't forget the big splash on February 22nd. If you're not interested in swimming or coming for that, you can still give money for the, for the scholarship program. If you know people that would enjoy coming out, it's not a lot to swim on that day, and all proceeds go for the, for the scholarship program, so. And tickets are already beginning to go for the Barn Bash in May, so it's not like they're selling out yet, but, you know.
Wow.
And is there anything on UPDAC planning group?
We met last August to finalize the first half of the topics for 2020. We'll be meeting soon to finalize the rest of the topics for 2020, for second half.
Moving on then to old business, there was nothing removed from the consent agenda in the way of old business, so we're on to new business. Action to award annual bid for the Program Guide Printing Services.
Good evening, everyone. This year, we recommend that the board approve the low bid from American Litho to print our Program Guide for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The Program Guide with offset paper and an additional glossy cover in full color costs not to exceed $35,000. Two additions will be 80 pages and one addition 72 pages. Again, American Litho out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin, was the low bidder, and we recommend approval of the low bid.
Were these the guys that sent the email?
Yes.
Yes.
That was really interesting.
Yes.
I've never seen anything like that before.
I move to award the bid for printing to, for the 2020-21 Seasonal Program Guide to the American Litho for the two 80-page print runs and one 72-page print run with a total price not to exceed $35,000.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting at the right.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. And then moving on to action to award Crystal Lake Park Road Repair and One-Way Circulation
Yes, we have a proposal tonight from Fairgram Engineering. This is the group that recently completed work at our ITAP PATH project and conducted the preliminary planning study of the one-way road concept within Crystal Lake Park. That study provided support through a public process for the one-way road concept that would have vehicular traffic moving on the right-hand side of the road, entering off of Park Street and then exiting at Broadway Avenue. And that would allow for a safer and expanded bicycle and pedestrian path system utilizing that other side of the road. And as part of that transition, Fairgram, within the study, recommended a plan for striping and signage to help direct traffic and pedestrians in a safer manner. The study also analyzed current road conditions and identified options for repair and reconstruction of the road with cost estimation, with help from Applied Pavement Technologies as a subconsultant. And additionally, it identified opportunities to expand parking, primarily on the lower lake house parking lots, and then potential for bump-out parking kind of between the large pavilion and the, what will be the new small pavilion that's associated with the OSLAD improvements with the Lake Rehab Project. Recently, we met with Fairgram to request the proposal that's attached to the memo to begin moving forward with the project. It would provide design services through construction for implementation of the one-way road concept, the new parking mill and overlay of the entire road surface, and then provide additional base repair based on the condition analysis that was conducted by Applied Pavement through that preliminary study, and then whatever other areas we find that would need some additional base repair as we progress through further design and evaluation of the road. As far as budget, last November, the board authorized refinancing of the bonds, the 2019 ARS budget document that you had before you a little bit earlier, and that was for projects towards improvements at Crystal Lake Park and health and wellness initiatives. As part of the prioritized list of projects in a budget we presented with that refinancing, the CLP Road Project was our second highest priority within the Crystal Lake Park Improvement category. So funds for this project and specifically for this design proposal as well would come out from that 2019 ARS capital budget. We're anticipating to bid the project probably in between I.DOT bid windows next winter and could have construction next spring 2021. And we are recommending to award those design services to Fairgram in the amount of $212,705 and a 15% design contingency of $31,905.
Just as a matter of clarification, in the first paragraph of your, your memo about this, it, it mentions extension of the path along Broadway Avenue connecting the two as planned for a grant application in fall of 2020, but these design services would not be included in part of that. So we separately...
No, it was more just of an explanation of the trail improvements at the park, what has been done recently, and what we have future planned, and then this kind of expands upon that as well with the road project.
So will you be coming forward with a contract for some kind of design in preparation for a grant?
Yeah.
Currently, the, the grant application is forecasted for late summer, early fall of 2020. In our current I.TEP application, we did preliminary engineering, so we are ready to apply, and we've done the requisite engineering for that. We also have, after these two projects, if engineer assessments are accurate for the lake and for the roadway, enough remaining bond reissue funds to fund that project in entirety if we don't get the grant, but we're hopeful we'll get the grant. If we, obviously, we still need to get actual bids on both projects before we, we know where we stand, but there should be funds available to do that project even without the grant. If we get the grant, potentially, some additional work in Crystal Lake Park. I believe our next highest priority project is the Turkey Trot Trail, if I remember correctly. So we just wanted to conclude this here because ultimately, it's that path with the road and the existing path that create that loop trail system that we think will be...
That's the linkage.
Important.
Do we need to worry about heavy truck traffic coming in for other work we're doing on the, on the lake that's gonna be a problem for the repaired road? Is, how do we deal with that?
Yeah, as part of the bid document, it's outlined that any damage that's caused by the contractor to the road would need to be repaired, and there's a documentation process that's involved before they start any construction activities, where they would actually video the entire condition of the road before they bring in any of those trucks.
Good.
Do you mean, like, is there gonna be a conflict between the Lake Rehab Project and this road project?
No.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was, my concern was, do we do this? And then they come in and smash the road all up, or do we put the road back and wait till they're all finished? Okay, that's all I need to know.
We, we had a similar situation. We did the roads, the two sections before. We still had to operate the pool and take chemical deliveries and things like that. So they had to get in, and we're also responsible for any damage.
Good, okay.
We also anticipate that with bids being awarded for the lake portion in April, and this engineering just starting now, likely most of that really heavy traffic will be done before we do the road work.
But if not, then we're covered. That's, that was my concern. Good.
One of the obvious, you know, points, obvious to make, especially with our rec staff in the back of the room, you know, it's gonna be a lot of disruption, you know, at all the facilities, and so we'll just create as many workaround plans. You know, we're trying to get that message out there for the next few years. It's gonna be messy, but it's gonna be great when it's done. And, you know, we know it's difficult for the families, the visitors, the people that come to the lake house, the nature center, any of the park, you know, so we'll, we'll have our hands full, but hopefully, we'll get through all of the major work and, within a few years, be able to really celebrate.
All right, where's that motion?
I move to award design services for the Crystal Lake Park Road Repair and One-Way Circulation in the amount of $212,705, a 15% contingency of $31,905 to Fairgram Engineering of Champaign, Illinois.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting at the left.
Aye.
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 And that carries unanimously. Which brings us to the Recreation Statistics Review calendar year 2019.
Staff's lining up. Corky's gonna introduce us.
So while they're getting into their spots, we have, what you have in front of you, what was in the board report, is our year-long statistics. We do these statistics reports for every brochure guide, and then for this meeting, typically, we put all the information together. We do the front pages, front four different charts, and I usually review those with you. I thought that, and any questions you have, we definitely can answer them. The numbers, obviously, on those four charts, you can see as, as a whole, we've increased. I'm very satisfied with that. But again, instead of me talking this year, I thought it'd be good to have our awesome core team here. They're going to, they had to keep it short because we didn't, you know, want to make this a long presentation. I wanted them to give you a couple of their, their good things that happened over the course of the year, and then fill you in with maybe a couple challenges that they'll be working through as we move forward for next year, so. Mark, it's all yours.
All right, I'm the first one out of the gate. This year, we had continuing scheduled media that we've had for several years, monthly appearances on the WDWS NewsHour, the monthly appearance on WCIA TV's Central Illinois Living to discuss programs and events. We continue to produce Mark in the Park, which is shown on Urbana Public Television, and those programs are also put on the UPTV YouTube site, and also, we put them up on the Urbana Park District website. A total of 32 programs have produced, have been produced. We have our usual annual media campaigns, including soccer registration, basketball, yoga, zumba, BioBlitz, demonstration kitchen events, and Turkey Trot. These are produced, actually produced media. This is 60-second videos that we make, that we post on social media, Facebook and Twitter, that we share. The subject, the person, the instructor talks about their event, and we make it look nice, edit it up, and put it on social media. These videos have received a higher-than-average amount of engagement, likes and shares, and it's really been an effective tool, and it's an emerging tool that we're using. Average three web stories a week on urbannaparks.org, we share those on social media, and we freshen up our website. This year, we oversaw a graphics refresh and upgrade to urbannaparks.org. If you go on the website, you will notice it looking much different than a year ago. And we have begun moving our intranet documents and sheets, expense report sheets, home, human resources sheets, those things, over to a password-protected site on our web. The advantage to this is employees that have a password can access this, and their computer doesn't have to be plugged into our network. Advertising, we have major advertising campaigns, including print, electronic, and digital ads on many local media outlets. Also, we have annual media campaigns for lifeguard recruitment, summer pool membership and passes, strawberry jam neighborhood nights. New this year was Bucy Woods BioBlitz, and also Art in the Park, and all, we have our annual Turkey Trot. And this year, we produced shop local ads on WCIA TV during the holiday season, a 15-second ad, and we highlighted our gift card purchases for the holidays. A, a challenge coming up before we head over to the Anita Purvis Nature Center, we're going to expand our video coverage, our one-minute video productions, and we need equipment. It does, we want to really do it right, which means we need lapel microphones, and we need a good audio gathering system. It means we, we'll have to get some more equipment, and we'll have to budget for that. It can go as big or as small as you want. We can stop at lapel microphones, we can go to a green chroma key screen, like the weather people use. people use. We'll probably go somewhere in between that, maybe skewing more towards the lapel mics, but we're going to be building our equipment over the years, and just to find out what works, it could be some trial and error, hopefully more trial instead of error, and also to find out new ways to communicate on social media. For many of our teenage population, Facebook is for old people, and I'm old people, so, yeah, boomers, even though I'm Gen X, and just to find ways to get the message to them that they belong at Urbana Park District.
Mark, why don't you, why don't you, I know, I think I read it again, but the tap dancing class and the other one where you increased the registration so dramatically, that was so impressive to me.
Oh, yes, we had a, we had a tap class, tap dancing class, beginner tap. It started on a Monday, and there were two, and the week before, there were two registrants. We produced a one-minute video of the tap dance instructor doing a little soft shoe routine, and then told about the class, and in the space of four or five days, there were enough registrants where she had 11 people taking part in her class on Monday, which was just, she was very, very excited and very pleased about that. And we put that on Facebook, and we did a boosted, we took out $10 to get it out to more people, a sponsored Facebook post. That was money well spent.
Well, I think, and that wasn't the only thing that you did like that, right? Didn't you do one?
Yes, we had a candlelight, we had a candlelight concentration workshop. There were, there was an email blast associated with that, but we also did a boosted Facebook post, and there was record attendance at the first event in January.
Hi, I'm going to talk a little bit about the environmental programs. 2019 was the nature center's 40th anniversary, and besides some stuff, some upgrades that we did to the facility, we chose to pick 40 programs and events from the last 40 years. That resulted in an actuality of 102 programs or contact events with the public, and we saw about 1,100 people, a little over 1,100 people. If strawberry jam hadn't been rained out, that would have been over 5,000 people, so the numbers were a great number for contacts. We did a lot of collaboration. We had two storytelling events with four tellers for our Big Grove Storytelling Festival, and three of those tellers came back with another new teller for Stories at Sunset. The Big Grove Storytelling Festival was meant to have those tellers. The Stories at Sunset was just going to have one, but the Crandert Museum had a grant they needed to use, an outreach grant, and they ended up helping us publicize the program and bring in additional tellers around the campfire. And that was, normally for those kind of programs, we get maybe 20 people if we're lucky, and we had a nice crowd of diverse people that evening. We had three different events for the Bio Blitz. We did a trial run with scientists in July, and then the day before the event, we did a program with area grade schoolers. We had three, or, yeah, three fourth grade classes that came out and learned about how to take data, how to survey what we had, and they took over 5, 300 identifications, and those were added to our numbers. And then we did the actual Bio Blitz, which was the 24-hour blitz. We had about 350 people, with 79 of those scientists. We offered 14 programs where the scientists presented what they, something about their topic of interest to a large number of people. And then, finally, I have a total of how many species? That took a little while. We used iNaturalist as our data collector. We saw 884 separate species during the, it was two days for the Bio Blitz, but then you add the students and the July count, and then we had a couple scientists who took some time to get us the data and added a couple more after that. I did a comparison, and this is a rough estimate because I'm still looking at the data, we had nearly 1,000 species unique to 2005. About 650 that were unique to this Bio Blitz, to 2019, and we had a total of 328 species that was common between the two Bio Blitz. So doing it two different times a year did bring us in some new data, so that was exciting. And then we ended off the year with the winter solstice event. We had 365 people who came for the entire event. They came and they just stayed for the whole three hours of the event, and there was a kids' craft room, we had Smokey the Bear, we had a bonfire with roasting marshmallows, and we put luminaires out in the woods, and people took hikes. The second program that I wanted to highlight for you guys today was our Camp Fresh program. Oh my gosh, I didn't write it down. What does fresh stand for? Future Responsible Environmental Stewards?
Heroes.
Heroes, that's it. I should know that. Chelsea's going to kill me. This was a pilot program last summer. We've had a variety of teen camps in the past with minimal involvement with teens. We sometimes have had to cancel the program. This program is designed to get the teens out into the community, links them up with resources in the community, and helps them have a real-life experience with it, so they're not just going and going on a tour, they're actually going to do something for that organization. And we ended up with 35 campers for the three weeks that we had, which was a 34% increase from previous years of camp programs. This summer, it was a three-week program, this summer we're doing four weeks, and Chelsea is already lining up different organizations and groups to be involved with it. They had themes last summer, she's going to kind of play it by ear with those students and really find out what their interests are. But for example, she met with Jim Nardi yesterday, and Jim's already got a whole series of scientists activities he's going to do with them. She also met yesterday with, oh, forgot his name, fire, Urbana Fire Department, and he's going to teach them about how to put survival kits together for their home, but he also does DJing and is going to do a party for the kids at the end of the summer.
Firefighter.
Phil, thank you, Phil. That was, I was going to say Fred, but I knew it wasn't Fred.
Say fireproof.
So that was, so that, so she got two things out of the bang for one with him. Some challenges for us is this year, as I've mentioned at a previous board meeting, our school tour programs have been hurting because of a change in procedures in the Champaign Park or School District. I am glad to say, I asked Chelsea today during our staff meeting, how spring tours were looking, and they're amazingly better. A lot more interest in our full bus programs because that helps cut down on cost, but she has already 2025 tours scheduled for the fall, or for the spring. And we were, we were 1,000 down for the fall programs, so that was heartening to see. We've, I've been noticing that our visitation has kind of plateaued, and so that's a challenge. We're trying to figure out how to get, why people aren't necessarily coming in the building. We have a new exhibit coming in, and we're hoping that will draw people. We are grand opening the brand-new gift shop this Saturday as part of our backyard bird count event, that you're all welcome to come. The store is totally new, new types of merchandise. We're doing a soft opening starting tomorrow afternoon. If you want to come by and check it out and give the staff a little bit of tusk, be kind to them. It's, there's still some kinks we're working out, and we're hoping that some of those things will help draw more people in. And then the other challenge that we still address, still are trying to address is, we use the Northwoods Pavilion in Crystal Lake Park, but there are no bathrooms except for porta-potties down there for camp kids, and we're limited with space at the nature center for that program, and so how can we, and now we're going to have road work in the next two years, too. So what, what ways can we address the needs that we have for that program and keep it in the high quality that it is? And that's it for us.
Just a quick question. The 62 fourth graders, was that all Urbana schools?
They were actually Champaign schools.
Oh.
Yeah. The ones that came out for the Bio Blitz were from, let me check, it should be in my notes, from Booker T. Washington. But we have, we have a program where Chelsea finds sponsors for Urbana schools to come, and we pay for their busing and for their program, and we've been, we've increased our school program use, like, for example, two years ago in the spring, we had no Urbana programs, and last year we had seven or eight through that program. So it's great to have the sponsorship that's helping. Okay, for aquatics, some of the big things that we've accomplished in 2019, obviously the Tiger Shark Swim Team. We started that in May this past year, 2019. We currently have about 45 members. I say about because when the swim teams for the, the school district come and go, we fluctuate numbers a little bit with IHSA rules, and you can't swim on a club team plus the, the high school team. So those just continue to, we continue to see more people interested. They're able to come in and try it out for about a week before they commit. Once they commit, then everything's online now. If you haven't seen our Tiger Shark website, please go check it out. It's really awesome. I took a lot of time to work on that. It has our logo that Fallon actually made when she was still here, and it just, it's a really sharp website. Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center rentals continue to rise. This is, let's see, let me get numbers here. So in 2017, we totaled 101 rentals, 2018 was 103, and 2019's 108. So we're slowly rising, but we constantly are having people asking us for more rental space or space that's already taken that they want to have their parties. So we're trying to look at creative ways to be able to accommodate to those rentals. Looking at maybe the bleachers being pushed in, which is a lot of hard work on maintenance side, so we don't really want to go that route. But then we also have, you know, the possibility of having some more open hours for the private rentals and those types of things. So we're just looking at how to continuously grow this area and make it a little more profitable for us and help the community out for our, their needs. The last accomplishment that I wanted to highlight is the return of aquatics camp. So when I first started in my position in 2006, I believe 2008 was the last year we had aquatics camp, we stopped doing aquatics camp when Crystal Lake was closed. Last year, we were able to start it again. We served 133 people this past summer in seven weeks of aquatics camp. So that really showed that, you know, people are excited about it, and the numbers for each week got higher and higher, so I'm, I'm very excited about this summer and where that could possibly, you know, lead us. We have eight weeks this summer from where school, you know, closes to where our closure for the indoor is. We don't do the full summer because we don't have that indoor facility to help us out with housing the camp. So some areas of future concentration, overall operations of the department, it was said earlier in the meeting today that we did focus groups. We're working really hard on trying to make a comprehensive plan on what to do, how we're going to do it, make sure that everything is streamlined and everybody knows exactly the direction we're going. Not only staff, but the patrons, the board, anybody would be able to, you know, find this information out. We want to be as transparent as possible through all of it. So that's one of our big areas of concentration. Another one is, we have to consistently train staff to ensure the highest quality of employees. They're young, there's nothing around that. We constantly have to remind them of things that you think, okay, I've told you this three times, why aren't you getting it? You know, but it's just something that we have to, it's just part of the job. One thing that came from our meeting today that I've already started looking at and discussing with staff is doing some more customer service training. And we already do some, but I want to amplify it even more, and I want to, I want to do specific ones for each of the positions. For instance, like a lifeguard can't sit there and totally look at you face-to-face and have a conversation with you while they're supposed to be looking at the water. But I want them to know how to professionally and politely say, I'm sorry, I can't look at you right now, but, you know, I can try to answer your question, or I can call a manager over. Little things like that that would make a world of difference, just in the customer service side of things. So those are some of the big future concentrations that I have.
A question.
Yeah.
Is this an area for future concentration? Just asking. Potential partnership with the school district again for swimming for third graders?
That is a constant conversation. That is a constant conversation, and it is difficult, trying to find transportation. That's the biggest cost, and we're constantly looking for different ways to do, you know, grants or scholarships or anything that we can find. It's proven to be very difficult.
It seemed like in previous conversations, we could probably overcome the transportation issue, but it was more of a buy-in from teachers.
That, too.
So that hasn't, are we still in the same position?
Pretty much. I don't want to speak for them, but.
Right, right, right.
It could be a different topic now, that they have PE teachers in, in the schools. When we were doing the program, it was actually the classroom teachers that were. So we haven't got into that discussion yet with them. However, being on the pool management team, we, we talk about it at least once or twice a year on, you know, is there going to be interest again? We have opportunities with some outreach dollars from Carl, however, I'm a little hesitant to use some of those dollars and then not be able to continue the program on. I don't want to start it back up and then, oh, sorry, those, those funds are no longer here.
I remember a ballpark estimate of like $30,000 needing to be available per year to support.
That's correct.
Is that still?
Yeah.
It would probably be a little more with.
A little more now as things increase, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right around that ballpark, yes.
35.
Scholarships would be helpful, too.
What's that? But, right, I mean, was that to support all the programming or all, and the transportation?
The 30,000 was pretty much all of it, back when we did it.
All the transportation and all that, okay.
So maybe this is something we have to bring up with UpDak. Just, I mean, it won't, won't have to take long to explain it to them, but I think that if we get the information out into the community, that this is something that we have been, that we started out with, we're unhappy that it's gone, and we're thinking very hard about getting it back. There are a lot of young, you know, people a lot younger than me in that, in that group, who I think would, might, would be interested in, in, in helping us find ways, just brainstorming, just more, more brains thinking about that.
I can say one thing we are doing that reaches all of kindergarten through fifth grade, is that we go through risk watch and do assemblies at every single elementary school in Urbana. So we're reaching all of those students and at least giving them the, the tools of how to be safe in the summer, especially, we do it in May, so it's like right then when, you know, things are getting hot and all that stuff, we remind them about sunscreen, about hydrating. You know, it's not in the water, I get that, and I, I want that, but I'm, I'm happy that we at least have that where we're, we're connecting with them.
Obviously, the trick would be to annually be able to have that resource.
Right.
You know, I think it's, I don't want to say easy to, you know, get it done one year or maybe two, but how do you consistently, if, if it's on the fundraising side, you know, where you're getting outside dollars or even grants change over time. Still a good goal, and I think, starting with UpDak's always a good.
Is there alumni association at the high school, at the park, at the school district?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could talk to them as well so that, I mean, even if they contributed a third of that cost, and they saw it as an, as an ongoing, as an ongoing thing, or they had suggestions of, you know, where to, where to tap into a revenue stream.
Well, the last we talked about it, we even talked about absorbing the cost in the UIAC budget and splitting between the two groups.
Ooh, yeah.
At least the pool management team was, they weren't like, oh, no, we can't do that, so, you know, we'll continue the discussion, and hopefully we can get to a, a yes down the road.
So now there's three of us.
It just seems like, it seems like, it seems like it's a, it's a fairly low-cost ask and a high impact for the community.
Right, right, yep, yep.
For the community, because it's one of those times where we're, we can reach everyone, right? If all the third graders are, are participating, I mean, there's just something that, um, just a really broad touch in the community. And we've talked about it from a, a variety of areas in terms of getting kids comfortable with the water, become, and, you know, and I don't know, it just seems like. It actually doesn't seem like it, it's that much.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
But I recognize, it's not all money, right? It's logistics and buy-in from various partners, so.
Well, at a minimum, we should update our costs, get a better number.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yep, yep.
Make sure we're on the right mark and, uh, obviously I think a consistent financial resource would be better. So that you're not relying on fund, you know, I think what Corky's saying is really critical, it, you can't have a start-stop program.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's right.
Who's people and you frustrate it and it just, so finding a way to consistently fund it, so it's always yes and getting it in and the priorities would be really critical. But again, more discussion, updating, reach out, look at all the sources and find out how can we consistently offer this opportunity? I mean, that was one of the original goals of the, for building the pool.
Right.
So, yeah, not, I mean, cost or cost what they are.
Right.
But I think the question we're all saying is, how do we get back to making that goal happen?
Right, because it's so important.
Because it is so important, you know, sure makes the difference, make the facilities and the guards and just the community that much safer and better.
Lizzie, do you have, um, information regarding the age of the persons that are saved, rescued, pulled out?
Yeah.
That'd be interesting to see.
Yeah, we can compile all that for sure.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it does, even just a real broad stroke.
Mm-hmm.
Because my guess is that a lot of them are third grade and younger.
Yeah.
Do you think it's made a difference having the, um, the life jacket program?
I do, yes. Um, the big thing there is just to make sure that the parents are aware that they have to still be near their child.
Hard as, yeah.
That's, that's part that we, we don't like about the program is that it's kind of like a babysitter almost. Um, but I do think that it's very beneficial and has helped a lot of kids over their fear of the water. I've seen older kids even where they're standing and they still just want that life jacket just to feel safe, um, and that's huge.
Yep, 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 yep. It is one of my favorite things, I mean, I think that's the, with the opening of the new pool, the, the life jacket. I mean, is that the kiosk that you're going to be redoing?
Yes.
Yes. So the life jackets, the, the swim diapers and the, was it goggles? Is that the other thing?
There, there is stuff down there like that. I don't know if we'll have that as the sales desk anymore. Um, it'll be more of like first aid, information, life jackets, um, that type of area. Um, we might have some small things that we know people want regularly.
But it's a, I mean, that whole thing is such a great idea.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, I'll touch on some of the athletics, uh, good and bad points for the year.
Thank you.
Are we more good than bad or more bad than good?
So for the rentals money that I have listed up there, that's not actually for the full year of 2019. It's just for this fiscal year, starting in May first through December thirty-first. We've so far brought in over twenty-one thousand dollars in gym rental and eleven thousand dollars in field rental this year. Sports camp also increased in their program revenue this year, seventeen thousand dollars from two thousand nineteen to two thousand eighteen. Not really sure how we had such an increase in kids, but we did have the most weeks forty-five to fifty kids this year compared to twenty-five to thirty the previous year. As far as the sports programs go, the numbers that I've highlighted here aren't huge numbers, but the, our soccer program for the fall did go up overall in numbers. But most of those overall increase was at the U-eight age group. We had ninety-one participants, uh, in the fall of twenty nineteen over fifty-seven in, uh, twenty eighteen, which is great because that's the, that's the age group we want to get them in and keep them in. So the more we can get at that younger age group and try to keep them in the program as they go through, the better. Um, pony baseball, we have been running the pony league for the surrounding towns for years. Um, but the last few years, Urbana hasn't actually had a team. We did field a team last year, which was great, except for the fact that I had to coach it. But it went really well and I think that we'll, uh, get most of those kids back. They were all of the age group that they can come back and play again this year, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout, maybe we'll even get two teams this year. Um, indoor soccer, in the fall, we had forty-two kids registered for our program, which is a little less than we normally do. And most of them were again at the younger age group. Um, we have an UPDEC member named Ben Cap who's heavily involved in our soccer program and very helpful to us. Um, he runs the indoor as the leader normally, but because of the numbers and because of his connections to a travel team that he organizes in Urbana. They, we brought in some of those kids to make the program bigger and did it more of an open gym for those kids. And basically we were able to reach sixty more players through an open gym type of thing rather than being involved in the program. But we still brought in money for the program.
He's the only person who had something negative to say about the new fitness and wellness.
What?
He was the only person who had something negative to say about the fitness and wellness center because he likes the, the, you know, the indoor soccer plays off the walls.
Yes, exactly.
At Brookins and there won't be, there won't be that.
He's, he's the second one, Kyle mentioned that too.
I'll mention that again here in a minute.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, all right, so two of you that we have to wear down, yeah.
I mean, then adult dodgeball, uh, our kickball's still our biggest adult program. We had fifteen teams last summer and we've had up to twenty teams in the past, but dodgeball, we've only started a couple of years ago and we went from four teams in twenty eighteen to nine, uh, last January. So hopefully that program continues to grow and maybe we can get, uh, big numbers like we had in kickball. The challenges for Brookins, kind of like what Nancy was just kind of touching on a little bit, is, uh, the, just the time and space. We, we are making a lot of money in rentals, but if you currently called Brookins and asked us if you could rent the gym, I don't care what day you say, between now and March, it's not available unless you want it at ten o'clock at night. It's completely booked, um, before ten o'clock at night, every night, except for Saturdays if you want it at eight o'clock at night on Saturdays. Um, so that's a great, it's a great problem, but it's, it's also a problem. But with the rentals, with the new facility, I think part of what Ben was talking about is the majority of our gym rentals are indoor soccer. Um, and while we do constantly have people calling to get rentals and we don't have rental space, so we don't know what they are, where they may be all basketball groups and we can fill a facility too. But the indoor soccer people are very concerned that a new facility wouldn't have walls that would accommodate them, which is several of our groups, so.
Quick question, are there other places they play indoor?
The soccer planet.
Okay, so that.
But it's really expensive is what Ben said.
It's really expensive.
Yeah.
Are there solutions to, rather than that like fabric wall curtain like that would separate the gyms like at Leonard? Is there something hard?
Possibly, we, we saw some kind of board, I think it's for a game.
Well, it was for, um, uh, Gaga ball.
Yeah.
I think you saw it too, but there's similar applications that, uh, gyms that have, you know, two court systems can kind of attach them together through that middle line that you can make so that you can play indoor soccer. The problem is, yeah, it's not ideal, it's not as high as they would really like it. And then you've got to store it and bring it out for every, in the turnaround of the courts, but it is a potential solution.
Um, another challenge is just the pickleball group. Our group continues to grow, we only have two courts taped at, at Brookins Gym and the tape has pretty much destroyed the gym where the tape is. So to add two more courts, you would have those lines that you've already destroyed and it would have to move, so they would be permanently visible. And then we'd have to put four more courts that would just destroy all four of those courts too. So you'd basically have six courts of destroyed permanent lines on the floor. Um, and also they want to play outdoors and they've been asking for, every year for years, but I feel like if I go out there and chalk the courts, because we're, the, I mean, I think lining is in the future plan, but it's not in the immediate plan. And to go out and chalk the courts every day, I feel like two people would go out there and play one day and not go out again or it would rain and it takes a lot of time to set up, so.
They're on chalk.
I know this is, is definitely something we're looking into is more, uh, pickleball options, but our group is growing up to twelve people now, which can't. So we have people sitting and waiting for the first time and forever, which is great, but.
And, and keep in mind when we were looking at, um, redoing the Brookins floor, um, before we got the news that the county may not be there forever. Um, we kind of took, put that project on hold, but when we were going to do it, we were going to sand it all the way down to the wood. And then we would have had pickle, pickleball lines painted onto the floor. But since that project didn't happen, we didn't move forward with it.
We paint, we tape them regularly for them, try to keep it nice. Um, the only other thing is, uh, the field, I mean, if we do lose those ball fields at Prairie Park, if, if the building does get built, um, it would reduce our ability to do rentals at those. It's our, one of our highest rental facilities and it is where we play kickball at. So it would cause some problems for some of those groups and other groups may have to just move to different locations throughout the parks, but.
Momentary disruption.
Yeah, momentary disruption and then, uh, I think that's, I think that's it.
How much does the, the increase of minimum wage affect your, your section?
It's not going to affect my section probably as much as a lot of the sections because most of our staff is officials who are already paid more than minimum wage.
Uh-huh.
Um, gym supervision will, the, those people will be getting paid more and scorekeepers will be getting paid more. But gym rentals, I'm sure are going to go up a little bit to accommodate, our gym rental is really cheap right now.
Ah, okay.
Um, that's probably why it's booked so solid. I think it's the cheapest, it's the biggest, but also the cheapest facility in the Park District to rent. So I think increasing the rental fee a little bit will help offset that.
Good.
It's also, also an area where you have a larger amount of, of participants per.
Per person.
Game, yep, yep, so.
Oh, 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 yeah, that would mine, okay. So, uh, for community programs, we had, um, some really exciting things happen in this past year. Um, we talked about, we added, uh, some more school, school class, uh, numbers at LEO for our splash program. Um, so it's, numbers quadrupled and they've, because they added more days, that's, you know, a really easy way to add a bunch of numbers is add more days. Um, our beautiful kitchen at the James Room, we had, um, ninety unique people come in through kitchen classes. There are probably Jacob, Nikki, myself, Ashley and Elsie are all meeting with chefs and nutritionists and cooks to program that kitchen. So there's a lot of us like adding programs, so we're very excited about all the things we've been able to offer in its first year, considering it didn't even open until April twenty-seventh, that's pretty impressive. Uh, so far in February this year, I've had zero lake house rentals. Last year we had a kind of weird baby boom and so I had all these February baby showers. So it was like, it was sixty-nine percent increase in rentals at the lake house and they were all baby showers. So I don't know what was happening nine months before February. You know, it's, uh, it's a great, it's a perfect spot for showers, we also do lots of bridal showers too. Um, and then our biggest thing is the six hundred percent increase in total, uh, progress is like Jacob's job and adding all these senior programs. So we did our Garfield Park trip and then he's been adding his technology help and iPad one oh one and his ukulele workshop is just like busting at the seams. I think Judy's taking it now this season.
Yay!
Yeah, all his pickleballers are taking it. So we have the workshop and then we're all also hosting the CU Ukulele Jam. So now we kind of took that on, um, so that's in the evening, uh, the ukulele workshop is in the afternoon. And then, um, very exciting, our special event attendance went up greatly because we added some new exciting events, the Crystal Lake Park Art Fair. We had about two thousand people come to the park and then at, uh, we had the stage at the Downtown Get Down with the city, um, on Main Street. And so that was about just over three thousand people that came to the Downtown Get Down. Um, both of those events will happen this year. Um, we learned a lot of lessons with the Crystal Lake Park Art Fair and we just had a, another planning meeting for it on Monday. And we're getting some really interesting artists from around the area. Twenty-nine of the thirty-two artists from last year are returning. And we're planning on, uh, adding some tent space, so we're going to take forty-five artists. We don't want to get too big, we wanted to stay about the size and to have the shopping experience that people had. Challenges that we worked through in twenty nineteen, um, we talk about the big growth in splash programs is hiring staff. We're hiring staff every week, Nikki's holding interviews and we're constantly trying to add staff. But right now, um, Nikki is spending anywhere from ten to twenty hours a week herself in the class, in the schools, running splash programs. And then shopping and program planning, so, um, it's, she said it was about nineteen hours last week because of the, um, early childhood session. And so that's in addition to the elementary classes, but, you know, tho- those programs are going, so we have to send who, you know, so she's there running them herself. So that has been a big challenge all this past year. We've been doing more job fairs, we've been doing other things to try and get it done. Um, so we're constantly looking for program leaders. And then another one that, um, Kyle and I, we both share is our frustrations with our ESS, our custodial service at the Phillips Center. It's just something kind of like all of us running programs, we're fielding complaints from participants and we send emails and we do stuff, but they, it's just really. It's, it takes a, it takes a lot of time out of our days just trying to like fill in and patch holes and cover things that didn't get done. And it's so, it is a challenge that we're looking forward to getting changes to that program for the next time we bid that out.
Okay, so, uh, for outreach and wellness, I decided to do like a recap or highlight from each of the three areas that comprise the department. So one for outreach, one for fitness and one for wellness. Highlight for more on the outreach side was just, um, the amazing event that we were able to put on for welcoming week twenty nineteen in collaboration with, um, the school district and, uh, CU Fair. So, um, the picture you see there with our mobile stage, um, that was from our welcoming week event. We had three hundred and twenty-two people come out. We did a Central American, um, Independence Day celebration because, uh, welcoming week actually coincided with the actual day of Independence Day for Central American countries. And it was great, we had a DJ, everybody got, um, food from three different food trucks, authentic food. And we're, we're really looking forward to planning that and growing that for twenty twenty. On the fitness end, um, we started a collaboration with a researcher from the University of Illinois this year who came to us, uh, looking for space. She does her Move MS program in Bloomington currently, but she's based out of U of I and was really sad up until this point that she hadn't been able to find a home uh, to house this really great class within the CU area, so I was happy she found a home with us. And, uh, throughout the course of the year, we've been able to offer several different modules for exercise, uh, for those with multiple sclerosis, uh, ranging from Zumba, functional exercise, yoga, Pilates. And I'm, I'm actually really excited to report that, um, coming this summer, we're expanding into the kitchen. Um, there were a couple of times when we're just so bursting at the seams at Phillips that their yoga class actually had to meet in the kitchen. And they loved the space so much and, um, she's working with a registered dietitian nutritionist from the university as well to offer a module this summer on cooking and the, uh, specific types of recipes and dietary restrictions that those of multiple sclerosis face. So I'm really excited to watch that grow over the summer as well. Uh, also, I really feel that our wellness workshops kind of started to come into their own this year. Um, we expanded our wellness programming into all eight dimensions of wellness. So everything from spiritual and financial and occupational into more of the realm that we were used to, the physical. Um, so you're seeing several different photos there of all different sorts of wellness programs that we've just been able to offer this year with, um, you know, an intellectual wellness game night that we did with Urbana Free Library. We've got another one of those actually coming up next week. Some social wellness, we hosted like a, a ladies' night where we did, uh, masterpiece and mocktails. So that's where you see those ladies painting, uh, cocktail glasses there. Uh, probably our longest running and most well-attended, the picture of the lake house there all lit up by candles. We do a monthly candlelight concentration, which several people in the room have gotten to partake in with me and it's been great. Uh, it's, it continues to grow. And then, um, let's see, another photo down there at the bottom, um, we've done. Another photo down there at the bottom, um, we've done some, some work on like environmental wellness in terms of workshops on how to make like your own environmentally friendly bug spray and, and things like that. It's just been crazy to watch it, um, to take off. And it's, it's really fun for Ashley and myself each season to kind of put it up on a whiteboard and see which dimensions of wellness are we lacking in. Like where do we need to form some of those connections and maybe offer some programming? Um, and it's fun to see what we can put into the works. Um, speaking of in the works, uh, very, very soon, our, our new mobile recreation vehicle, which is lovingly named Urbana.
That is so clever. That's a cool start whoever thought that up.
Uh, it will be rolling out this summer, so I'm happy to say that, um, interviews are already underway for our staff that we're going to hire to basically run and program that. So Ashley's hired one supervisor already and she actually has another interview set up for Monday. Um, we're already meeting with recreation staff to see which UPD events and programs that we can enhance by having Urbana there. And then working a lot with the community groups that, um, we have partnerships with to see how we can utilize the vehicle to enhance their experiences with the park district as well. Uh, and then also in the works, I'm happy to report that we are expanding even more on our free outdoor fitness. So I remember when I started just as fitness and wellness coordinator in 2014, I think it was like the second or third year of yoga in the park. And that's still, I mean, it's grown into just an Urbana staple. It's just what people do on a Saturday morning in the summer. Um, so we'll be offering, I think, ten Saturdays of that this summer. Uh, we've got, I think, five or six Saturdays where we're also offering free Zumba in the park. And then, uh, per, per public request, we are starting free Tai Chi in the park this summer as well. So yes, it's coming. Um, so it's going to be at Meadowbrook. Um, but our instructors for that actually want to host, um, the free Tai Chi more so at the Garden Pavilion. They think that that's going to be a really pretty setting, setting down there for that. So be on the lookout for that. Corky had asked me to add just the statistics there at the bottom. Um, so some of our more outreach-type programs or events that we offered in 2018 that we also continued in 2019 and plan to continue beyond, that's just a comparative set of numbers on how those have grown. Um, I will say the 2019 numbers do include, um, touches that we had through the incorporation of Carl dollars. So that does include individuals who received, um, Carl scholarships through us. And then that also includes numbers from those who participated in our Summer Lunches in the Park program um, that we did in conjunction with Public Health that we are planning to continue, if not expand, this summer with Urbana. I'll wrap it up here with just a couple of challenges that we faced. As we continue to grow this department, I'm finding more and more that space is an issue. You know, we keep forming all of these partnerships and connections and collaborations. And it's getting increasingly more difficult to find space within our current facilities. I, I always joked just fitness-wise that I had my hand in everybody's cookie jar, just programming fitness there. But literally, if you have open space anywhere, this is about the only room in the park district that I don't program. So, um, just, I, I think, right? With the prospect of a new health and wellness facility, that's really exciting for us and what we can do to continue to expand, um, and better serve there. And then the second challenge is just, again, as we continue to expand, um, time. We don't have in our department, it's, it's a two-person department full-time wise, but we don't have just general, uh, part-time staff who can assist with things. We have fitness instructors who are, uh, highly specialized and paid already pretty well above minimum wage. So, uh, we've been working with Corky already for next fiscal year's budget to budget in just a little bit for just some general part-time help so that Ashley and I aren't at every, every, everything.
Thank you. So that was much better than I could have done. And, uh, I just want to say that, um, these guys in the last few years, I mean, always have done a great job. But in the last few years, as we've been expanding with our outreach in each and every department, the way they've taken that to task and their staff have taken that to task is really phenomenal. And, um, Urbana should be really proud of what we're bringing to them. So that was just a, some highlights of what we do. You know, there's a lot more than, than what we brought up this evening. So just wanted to share that and thank you guys.
Anything you want us to know? I mean, you know, just sort of general, anything?
It's a loaded question.
But you're here. I mean, you know, in the old days, you'd have to schlep to every, you know, every, every board meeting where we'd see a lot of you. So we don't get to see you very often. Are there things you think we should know? Are there?
I think what I, um, find really exciting is that there's a lot more than I have remembered through my years with the park district. A lot more collaboration across the recreation department and with, um, we've got programs that we're doing with operations staff leading programs as well. And so I think that's, um, a benefit to the community, um, very much. And, and that, um, Elsie talked about her wellness programs, but, I mean, we're doing those across the district that in collaboration with her. And I think that's just really exciting to see.
Yeah, me too.
I'll make a comment, pointing out the obvious. A new health and wellness facility would add, probably speak to a lot of, I wrote down the challenges that were identified. And I think many of those would find relief from a facility like that. Certainly you're back to staffing and covering the cost and those sort of things, getting people there with transportation. But I think we are at that point where we're kind of bursting at the seams. Um, Brookins is just not, you know, ideal while it provides a few benefits like indoor soccer. Um, you know, you wouldn't pick a building like that just so you could have indoor soccer. You know, you'd need other things. So again, that's an answer that I think everyone in this room is really hopeful we could help because it'd take us to that next level.
I'm, I'm going to, um, well, while they're all still sitting there, my comment at the end was going to be, um, that last Friday, I went to the, um, state meeting wrap-up and every single person, except Judy, who had extenuated and who had planned to go, was, was at the meetings. And the ideas that they came back with were really pretty, pretty stupendous. And it was very interesting to hear what they, what they had to say and the, the variety of, uh, sessions they went to and the new ideas they came from. And, I mean, I'll speak for myself and I think some of them felt the same way, you know, that Elsie saw. Did you know something on pop-up play? And it turned out that one of these fancy, um, Chicago suburbs, one of the wealthy Chicago suburbs, wasn't it? Had, they had a bicycle to do their pop-up play stuff? I mean, this is maybe the same one that had museums that they were running some of their programs. But nonetheless, I, what, it, it, the things that I went to and I think what I gathered from what they said, um, was that for a small district, downstate, with a lot of money challenges, we are really doing a very good job. And that's they're doing. Yep.
Well, I will say there's an awful lot of creativity on display in, in the things that you're putting together and trying.
Yeah, and what was scheduled for a two-hour meeting went on for essentially three hours because there was so much to see and so much to, to talk about. And a lot of really good ideas. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Yep.
Thanks.
More ways than one.
Okay, moving along, we had no new business removed from the consent agenda, so we're at comments from commissioners. Any further comments? Well, hearing none, I guess then we have exhausted our agenda and I'll declare us adjourned.